It's 7:00 and we will be starting our meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here, ladies and gentlemen. At this point in our meeting, council would like for us to take a moment of silence in the memory of Ronald Green, who was the city councillor for many years here in the city of Alamosa. Please join us. At this point, we'll have roll call. Kristi?
We have a quorum with seven councillors present.
Thank you, council. Next up is agenda approval. Are there any changes, Kristi, to the agenda?
I motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Start voting, please. Sir? Kristi?
Motion passes with six yeses and one no. I'm not sure from who.
All right.
Five yeses. So someone didn't...
My button's still on here, too. Okay. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
unanimously. Thank you. Next up is citizen comment. I've got one card from Rhonda Borders. Please step forward and... Thank you for being here, Rhonda.
Good evening, council. I'm Rhonda Borders, 46 Cascade Avenue in Alamosa. I'm here tonight as representative of the Friends of the Library and I'm here to make a presentation to you, short one, on the activities of the Friends of the Library because you so generously support us. And thank you as the city for donating to us the shed in which we hold our library sales and the various resources that the city provides and the devotion to the library. And thank you specifically to Saleah Taylor, the librarian, and her staff for all the work that she does with us. During the year of 2013, we gave $5,000 of unrestricted money to the library, which I believe they are using to enhance their children's collection and their audiobook collection. In 2012, we were able to give them $15,000, which had accumulated over a couple of years. In general, our sales at the bookshed, usually five or six sales over the spring and summer and fall months, generate around $4,500 to $5,000 a year. But the Friends of the Library also provide a number of donations to various community groups, including Rainbows Inn, the detention center, the youth detention center, the community corrections, the hippie children's reading program, and to the Rotary who deliver books to hospital and doctor's office waiting rooms. Our bookshed operations and sale dates for the year of 2014 are underway. The next date of our big sale will be along with the Summer Fest on June 6th and June 7th. The Book Nook in the library is a place where people can buy books at any time that the library is available, and we try to reserve our nicer volumes for that particular venue. One of the things that's happening with the Friends of the Library is that we've gotten more members into the group, and of course, we're always looking for more, but that also allows us to be a little bit more professional in our operation and becoming more structured. We're developing written guidelines for the operation of the shed and the sales this year so that anybody who's coming into the group will know how that operates and what to do. We've had a lot of success, I think, but there's still lots of room for growth, and there are some ways in which the city could help us with that. The first thing that we need before June 6th is that the alleys between 2nd and 3rd be graded and leveled, and if possible, there could be more asphalt paving in that parking area that we use behind the post office. I would also like the city to consider finding a way for us to be able to recycle paperback and hardback books within the city of Alamosa in our recycling efforts here, because right now, I'm having to haul them to Colorado Springs where I can recycle them. The general public is not pleased when we're throwing books in the landfill. Any additional lighting that we could have in the shed, especially in the workroom area, would be a wonderful thing, and of course, our biggest dream of all is a well-lighted and heated permanent building with more room to work and store materials that could be open to the public at least once a week or more often.
Thank you very much, Rhonda. We appreciate it. I guess you folks can be considered the silent literary heroes of our community, and we appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Maybe we can visit with staff. Staff have any thing to say about maybe some of the lighting or any of the grading there?
We can certainly take care of the grading. The lighting, we have to look at and see what kind of lighting circuits we've got available in there, what the load is and all those types of things. As I recall, it's basically an open roof-type structure with incandescent lights. We may still have some of the fluorescent fixtures. We had some newer ones with the T5 type bulbs that we might be able to move over there. The biggest problem with those is they won't start very well in the cold, so I'll take a look at it and see what we can do.
Thank you, Don. Well, we'll look into that, Rhonda. Thank you very much. Next up is the fun part of the meeting, and tonight, under ceremonial items, we have the oath of office for our new police chief, Dwayne Oaks. Congratulations, chief.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Very good.
Do you want me to say a couple of words?
Chief, you've got about five minutes.
I won't need that much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank you for the council, the city staff, the police department staff, and the citizens for having confidence in me and their support during the hiring process, and the city manager who's not here for appointing me as the new chief of police. Over the last six years, I've had the pleasure to work with the last two chiefs, Craig Dodd and John Jackson, and they've both taken us tremendous leaps forward, and I continue to take the police department forward and develop and hire professional staff and provide the best services to the city that we can, the most professional services, and continue with their vision that they've started. I'm going to strive to build a solid reputation across the state, which we already have. I want to continue to build that and become the most professional police department in the state. So I just want to say thank you to everybody, the community members, and all your staff. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Public safety is a major concern in our community, and we are glad you're here. Take on that position. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next up, and I do want to recognize Don Costin for sitting in for Heather tonight. I was remiss in doing that.
This is my last meeting. I'm just going to try to slide out. It just didn't work.
Well, we thank you for being here, Don. We really appreciate you. Next up, we've got some life-saving awards for Corporal Spangler, Officer Kinshue, and I know I didn't do that right, and Officer Alderton. Chief, thank you.
Again, good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. I'm in front of you again tonight to recognize the outstanding performance of several of our officers and present them with awards for their actions. Little history about the incident that we're going to give them awards for. On February 11th, 2014, Officer Kinshue, Officer Alderton, and Corporal Spangler responded to an ambulance call in reference to a male not breathing and turning blue. Upon arrival, they found the subject was not breathing and had no pulse. Officer Kinshue and Corporal Spangler immediately began CPR and continued to perform CPR until EMS arrived. At this point, Officer Alderton took over chest compressions and continued to assist the ambulance crew until they were able to transport him to the emergency room. At the emergency room, he regained his pulse and normal breathing on his own. CPR was performed for over 20 minutes by these officers. If you've ever done CPR or even trained on it, 20 minutes is a long task. We later learned that the subject passed away, but because of the actions of our officers, it gave them additional time with the subject and their family to spend time together. So their actions are truly a representation of the training that our officers receive and the professional services that we provide to the community. It's for these reasons that I like to present the life-saving awards to each of these officers involved in this call. And you might recall Corporal Spangler and Officer Kinshue, they were here about a month ago, and they got accommodation awards for their actions in a different call. So they're definitely showing how professional they are and the training and services that we provide. So, Robert, if you want to... Once again, we're giving them a medal. It says "life-saving award" on it. They have a pin that they can wear on their uniform, and then we have certificates that also are life-saving awards, and it says that "to each officer whose quick response and actions on February 11th saved the life of another person."
Thank you. First one we have is for, and we're not doing this by seniority or rank, Officer Tate Kinshue. Second one, we're going to present is for Officer Daniel Alderton. And last and certainly not least, Corporal Joey Spangler.
What do you all want to speak?
I just want to thank city council for their time, Chief Oaks and Sergeant Rogers for recognizing the work that we do. Although this isn't the thing we had hoped for that night, it doesn't take away from the way these guys performed that night. I also want to add moments like this is what we train for as an organization, and as a supervisor, I am proud of the way these two acted that night with such confidence and without hesitation during an incident. So again, thank you for the recognition.
Thank you. You gentlemen don't want to stand? Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Counsel, we'll move on next to the proclamation for Mental Health Month. And this is a long proclamation, so I'm going to read this, and then we will go down there and present that to you. "Mental Health Month 2014. Mind Your Health. Whereas Mental Health Month has been observed since 1949 to raise awareness about mental health conditions and the importance of mental health wellness for all, and whereas mental illness is a leading cause of disability in Colorado and the state has the sixth highest suicide rate in the country, and whereas a lack of access to mental health services is repeatedly listed as one of the top five health threats around the state, and whereas as many as 1.5 million Coloradoans may be affected by mental illness regardless of age, gender, race, ethnicity, religion, or economic status, and good mental health is essential to the overall health and emotional well-being of Colorado's youth, adults, and families, and whereas there is a strong body of research that supports user-friendly tools that all Americans can access to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and whereas promotion and prevention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health condition, and whereas promotion and prevention, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, faith-based organization, healthcare provider, and citizen has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts, and whereas the San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Center, through its unique approach to serving children, adolescents, and families, is effectively caring for the mental health and behavioral health needs of children, youth, and families in our community, therefore, I, Joseph P. Lucero, on behalf of the Alamosa City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2014 as Mental Health Month in the city of Alamosa. As the mayor, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Alamosa to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. And I have signed this, and I will ask council to join me in presenting you with this proclamation. Next up, counsel, is the proclamation for the Historical Preservation Month, and I have asked Counselor Rusty to do the honors.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to do this. My historic preservation friends are in the audience, Don and Rhonda and Jordan. Thanks for being here tonight, and of course, the mayor didn't give me much notice, so I'm going to struggle through this real quick. I'm glad it's a short one. May 2014 is Historic Preservation Month, whereas the city of Alamosa, in celebration of the month of May as archaeologically and historic preservation month, recognizes that historic sites and structures in the community are symbols of our heritage and valuable assets to the quality of life in our community. These structures anchor our downtown, our residential areas, and larger community, upholding the native character of our city and installing civic pride by virtue of their very presence. Their potential as resources and attractors for heritage tourism is great. The events, businesses, and experiences these sites have hosted connect us to one another and form a vital part of the fabric of our community, and whereas Alamosa's many historic structures represent the diversity of our economic and architectural trends that are integral to the past and future development of this great community founded 136 years ago, the city is actively engaged in recognizing these emblems of our heritage through Alamosa Historic Registry. Now, therefore, Alamosa City Council proclaims the month of May 2014 as Historic Preservation Month and encourages its citizens to advance historic preservation activities in the community. And this will be signed by our mayor and presented. All right, Rusty.
Say green cheese. No, it's not Mars. Next up, council, is Consent Calendar A, award for bid, skid steer loader, and approve the minutes of our regular meeting, April 16th, 2014. Do we have any questions or comments or a motion?
If not, Mayor, I'll make the motion we approve Consent Calendar A as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Start voting, please. Kristi?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, council. Next, we'll move on to regular business. Business forward by city staff, our city manager and Don.
The first item on the potential aviation economic development, we have some gentlemen here who will be making a presentation, Mr. Sean McLung and Mr. John Hughley. They have a proposal for potential developmental project at the airport. So I'll turn it over to them, and they certainly know more about it than I do.
Can I make some comments before we turn it over? Don, please. For years, the city and the county is always trying to find economic development, and we've had Mike Wisdom and Darius Allen that's been working on these people for a couple of years. Well, they brought this to our airport through our airport manager, who presented it to the airport board, and we felt that this is one of the great, great economic development project, so we decided to bring it to the council to let these gentlemen present it and share it with the council.
Thank you, gentlemen. If you'd state your name and tell us a little bit, maybe, or just state your name and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Certainly. Distinguished councilman, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sean McLung. I'm a retired Colonel of U.S. Air Force. I'm here representing UAS Colorado. That's Unmanned Aircraft Systems and also Rocky Mountain UAS. I'll go ahead and get started while they're bringing up the presentation. Well, that was quick and loud. All right. So Unmanned Aircraft Systems in Colorado, operations testing, and the economic impact. And we'll figure out where to move this home. So, UAS Colorado started about two years ago, and the FAA was directed by Congress to select six test sites across the nation to test the integration of unmanned aircraft systems into the national airspace. Colorado was very quick to throw in its hat for consideration for one of those test sites, and so we formed UAS Colorado. And this is a 128-member team that included 15 economic development corporations and councils, 30-plus airports, 50-plus companies, manufacturers, industry representatives. We had legal representation pro bono from Holland &amp; Hart, Sherman &amp; Howard. We had 10 universities, including Adam State, Trinidad State, the Air Force Academy, and those you see up there, a lot of fire department, police first responders, and emergency services, private pilots, business aviation, commercial aviation, and then the Colorado Department of Transportation, and particularly the Division of Aeronautics was also involved in this. UAS Colorado put together a proposal over two years, and Darius Allen, one of your county commissioners, was intimately involved in that, and he's also a board member on the UAS Colorado. And it became apparent after we submitted this proposal, it was a seven-volume proposal that included 14 proposed test sites in Colorado, it became apparent that we had no mechanism for revenue generation if we were selected, and so we formed Rocky Mountain UAS, which is an integrating contractor that brings the pieces and parts together. If you have an airframe, they provide a selection of the sensors that would go onboard, or they provide, we provide, the operators, we provide the ground systems, anything that's a gap that is lacking in the system, Rocky Mountain UAS provides. So, an introduction of our team this evening. I'm the chairman of Rocky Mountain UAS. John Hughley here as the vice chairman. Constantine Deal is our director of international business, and David Couch is the CEO of Red Scarf Enterprises and a contributing member of UAS Colorado. What we're going to cover tonight as briefly as we possibly can, because it's a very big subject, is the unmanned aircraft development in Colorado and the economic development for the San Luis Valley. And then we'll have an informational presentation, and we'll open it up for questions and answers as you deem we have time. So I'm going to turn it over to John right now for the main presentation. Any questions? for revenue generation if we were selected, and so we formed Rocky Mountain UAS, which is an integrating contractor that brings the pieces and parts together. If you have an airframe, they provide a selection of the sensors that would go onboard, or they provide, we provide, the operators, we provide the ground systems, anything that's a gap, that is lacking in the system, Rocky Mountain UAS provides. So an introduction of our team this evening. I'm the chairman of Rocky Mountain UAS. John Hughley here is the vice chairman. Constantine Deal is our director of international business, and David Couch is the CEO of Red Scarf Enterprises and a contributing member of UAS Colorado. What we're going to cover tonight, as briefly as we possibly can, because it's a very big subject, is the unmanned aircraft development in Colorado and the economic development for the San Luis Valley. And then we'll have an informational presentation, and we'll open it up for questions and answers as you deem we have time. So I'm going to turn it over to John right now for the main presentation. Any questions thus far? Okay, great.
Council members, Mayor, appreciate your time. I've been in your valley for about two years, working this project. You were one of 14 locations I went to in the state. The more I've been here, the more I've found out just what Alamosa Valley really brings as far as the production and the development of unmanned systems in the United States. For the record, I am a test site director, excuse me, I am the mission commander at the Texas test site that was selected, and I'm also the mission commander at the Virginia test site for the current testing missions going on there. I have a 24-year Air Force history, 17 years I've been an airspace manager, developing and conjoining the use of manned, unmanned helicopters, commercial aviation, and business aviation. So my entire job for 17 years was deconflicting aviation. Apparently, we've lost our slides. For those of you that don't know, there's three terms that we commonly use for unmanned systems. It's an unmanned aircraft system, an unmanned aerial vehicle, or remotely piloted aircraft. There's a derogatory term out there that everyone sees on the news every night, and we prefer not to use it. That is called a drone. Drones are uncontrolled, they do what they're programmed to do, and that's it. The aircraft we talk about are fully controlled, and they serve a particular purpose with a man or woman on the ground controlling that aircraft. They're just not located in the airframe. Next slide. We are talking things the size of a, larger than a Cessna, as you see here, the singular air tanker. This is an aircraft that drops water. Okay, next slide. The Celix Falco UAV, this is currently the only civilian unmanned aerial vehicle supporting the United Nations missions for peacekeeping in Africa. You'll see the Falcon UAV here by the Mesa County Sheriff's, a local Colorado company. You'll also see Scion, which is a helicopter-style unmanned aerial vehicle of various sizes. You'll also see Reference Technology, a Boulder or Lafayette, Colorado company, that uses a helicopter-style multi-rotor vehicle for its sensors. Black Swift Technologies out in eastern plains of Colorado, looking at weather data. All the way down to something you hold in the palm of your hand. Now, for purposes here in Alamosa, the smaller micro UAVs, they're not what we will be talking about, but just so you know, that's the breadth of unmanned systems. They're typically classified in four groups, either by their maximum takeoff gross weight, their normal operating altitude, or their speed. As you can see, we go from zero to 20 pounds up to greater than 1,320 pounds. We're talking the size of a 737 to something in your palm of your hand. Next slide. They're launched either traditionally, like at an airport off a runway, or they can be thrown in the air or catapulted in the air. When they're recovered, they can be caught in a net, caught on a line, or they land and slide in on their belly. Typically, it's a system that we talk about, not just the vehicle. The system is where they're controlled from, how the data is transferred to the airframe, and the airframe itself. Then what the airframe is doing is collecting data to send back. Next slide. This can be done from something as small as a laptop or a suitcase, all the way up to a full-size trailer, as you see the Air Force trailer there and the manned mobile vehicle. And Reference Technology in Boulder has an old Air Force command center that they've translated in, as you see in this slide, to a command center for these vehicles. Who needs them? Why are we here? Next slide. Just forget that, keep going. So emergency management. How many of you remember the floods in Boulder last year? People were isolated, they were cut off from their roads, the first responders had no idea which roads or bridges were wiped out. The unmanned system can give an instantaneous response to the first responders, they can have a laptop in their hand where they can see what the vehicle sees. It gives them rapid response, it saves lives, and it allows them to tailor their response to the disaster. Next slide. The Black Forest Fire of 2013, how many remember that? I do, because my house is 1,500 feet from it. It hits home for me. I stood there knowing what this technology can do, and I couldn't protect my own home because I can't bring it to life. Next slide. The Waldo Canyon Fire of 2012. I sat at the Air Force Academy with eight vehicles that we could not provide to the responders to help them, because there were no rules, regulation, or testing done, and nobody was comfortable with those that operate them. Next slide. This was a result, 600-plus homes in Black Forest, 300-plus homes in Colorado Springs and Waldo Canyon. Next slide. As you see here in the upper-left slide, had those firefighters in Arizona had a UAV overhead, they would have known exactly where they were, the 19 that we lost. We would have been able to track them, provide them data, tell them where to evacuate, let them know when the winds change, and save them from that fire. In the lower-left corner, you'll see the singular aircraft. I'd like Constantine to expand on that for a moment.
Thank you, John. So a quick note, why is this specific aircraft, it's unique in its way, because it is a UAV, yet it is an air tanker. It can carry up to two tons, it's about 4,000 pounds of water or retardant at any one time, and it can be used to suppress fires or control fires or save lives, also for firefighters who need protection with water. This aircraft is actually currently a prototype built by a company in Spain, and that company is interested to come over here to testing here in Colorado to prove out their system and to have an environment where they can test and prove out the system live.
The unique thing about this aircraft is it can do what a manned aircraft can't. As a pilot myself, I don't want to fly through smoke where I can't see the terrain. The UAV doesn't care. It knows where the terrain is. It can get right down on the fire. Again, unmanned system. Next slide. Search and rescue. If you look at this series of slides here, we generate manpower, vehicle power, horsepower, and eventually helicopter to rescue a lost hiker or an injured hunter. With a UAV, we can tailor that response. One vehicle can scan a very large area in a very quick amount of time, whether they're looking through snow, finding heat sources in trees, or rescuing people in a fire and getting them away. UAV response time and the ability to go where the manned aircraft can is a huge help and savings to budgets. Next. Precision agriculture, does this is home to Alamosa? It's quite a valley of agricultural development. This is about 20% of the UAV industry. Next slide. We can actually pinpoint which invasive species are in a field. We can tell you the flow of your water, we can tell you which sections of your crop need to have specific pesticides and what amounts, and we can tailor that application, saving costs, saving overspray, saving runoff into your natural resources. Again, a huge cost savings. Next slide. Natural resource management. I don't think there's anyone in here that doesn't know about beetle kill in Colorado, or the devastation of our forests, which is now leading to the most destructive fires we've had in history. We can find that early, detect it early, and deal with it early. There's wildlife monitoring, some of the largest game herds in North America are elk right here in Colorado. Avalanche management, snowpack measurement. Next slide. We're doing it in the Arctic, we're doing it in Africa, we're doing it around the world. We're sampling polar bears and the numbers on the ice pack. It's already occurring everywhere. Next slide. As far as surveying and precision mapping, the ability to find the effluent from a mining site, control, monitor, and make sure that we're doing the appropriate things to protect our environment, that's what the UAS brings to the industry. Power lines, structures, bridges, monitoring, repair, finding out what's broke. Next slide. If you look in the bottom-left corner, you'll see a resistor on a particular power line that's showing heat, meaning it's damaged or not providing what it needs to. We can instantaneously find that with the right sensor and tailor the response, thereby saving millions of dollars across the state alone in response fees for repairs. That goes to wind energy and everything you can imagine. Colorado has the largest river rafting industry in the nation. It's all driven by snowpack. You don't know what your next season will be until you know what kind of snow we have. Next slide. Ski industry, how many times a year do we shut down mountain passes so we can launch 105-millimeter howitzers shell into the snowbank and drop a snow corner so it doesn't create an avalanche, shutting down our highways and impacting our traffic flow? A UAV does that eight inches above the surface with a small charge, and it's allowed to pinpoint that, thereby not closing the highways and doing it in a smaller, less aggressive manner. Next slide. So the future. In 2010, the Teal Group, a nationally recognized group, estimated that the U.S. industry alone would be an $80 billion industry. As of two months ago, they've upped that to over $100 billion in the U.S. alone. Next slide. Significant cost savings. The UAV can accomplish everything that a manned aircraft can do, and it can do it at a full magnitude of difference. What is a full magnitude? If a helicopter costs $250 an hour to operate, a UAV does it for 25. If your annual manned search and rescue budget is 250,000 with manned aircraft, we reduce that to 25,000, just based on the capability of the airframe and the cost. It's simple math and it's huge savings to communities across our state. Next slide. These are high-tech, high-paying jobs. The average UAS pilot is earning 55,000 to 85,000. The maintainer between 35,000 and 55,000. An average manned pilot, starting in a U.S. regional airline, is 28,000, and at a major airline, 35,000. Why Colorado? Next slide. Colorado was recognized during the test site competition as having extremely diversified terrain. We have the flat, level plains of Lamar, we have the high mountain deserts, we have the alpine terrain, we have quite a variety, from green grass to dead dirt. So there's an extreme that other states don't offer. Colorado's only competition in that specific realm was Alaska. Next slide. The FAA mandated, again, six test sites. They told them that they wanted to create the rules, the regulations, and the safeties required to operate these things concurrently with manned aviation. What they didn't do was fund it. So we've selected six test sites across the United States. The only one that's funding them is private industry or the states themselves. Most of those test sites are unfunded today. They have no manner to operate. Next slide. The FAA identified 28 criteria that were important for UAS testing. Colorado met every single one except a maritime environment. Colorado has the number-two aviation industry in the U.S. We have the number-two largest police UAS program in Mesa County, Colorado, and we have the largest number of COAs. A COA is a certificate of authorization. That's where the FAA tells you you're qualified to do what you do. Colorado University, by themselves, has more COAs issued to them than the rest of the nation. Next slide. In April 2014, the FAA announced that there would be no civilian UAS testing in military airspace. That put a huge impact on major corporations. Those major companies were suddenly without testing or training facilities. One of those is a $28.6 billion annual sales company. Another desires to move their entire manufacturing operation from here to here from Europe. All of them are looking for a place to train in the U.S. airspace. It's cost prohibitive for us to leave the United States. Currently, today, under a very restrictive set of rules, we can't train, but in very restricted areas. For a company to go to Europe and train 10 pilots, they may spend 3.5 million. The majority of that will be in travel and expenses for hotels. That'll take them eight weeks. Here in the U.S., we could do that same training for $500,000. How many of those companies would rather put 3.5 million into the U.S. than 3.5 million in the European hotels, okay, where they have control of the training here in their own country? Normal training is approximately 120 pilots per year. A normal campaign for a single unmanned system to test and certify is about 20 people for three months. Those people are running your facilities, they're using your restaurants, your hotels, renting vehicles, using air transportation to get in and out, buying supplies here and buying fuel here. This is the largest aviation development in 50 years, and again, it's a $100 billion industry in the U.S. alone. Next slide. We originally looked at 14 test sites, as you see in this slide. Mesa County was selected because it's the second-largest UAS operation. The northeast Colorado that extends into Wyoming, Nebraska, and Kansas was CU. That's where they currently operate. Just that university recognizes the premier university UAS program in the United States. We looked at Lamar because of the uniqueness of agriculture and the open airspace. We looked at the high mountains in Leadville, Buena Vista, and Salida, but that required significant radio control ability because of the peaks and mountains. When I came down here to the Alamosa Valley, I started analyzing how many things are here that I need. Because a UAV doesn't care about training the pilot to fly, it's training the pilot to put the sensor on the right thing to look at. And all the things we need to look at, agriculture, search and rescue, snowpack, big games, and all the other things I could identify here, are located in this valley. The surrounding mountains, the ag, and everything that happens here in tourism is what we need to be looking at. And that's things to look at to help, not things to look at to invade. Next slide. We identified this airspace. Many of you will look at that slide and go, oh, my gosh, that's our entire airspace over our head. How can you take all of that and we can't fly here? You've got to remember that we operate in a vertical environment. This is a three-dimensional environment. We don't activate the entire airspace at any one time, we don't ask to activate, and it is mandated by the FAA that we not impact commercial aviation, business aviation, or general aviation. The onus is on us to make sure we don't do that. We identified these areas over your valley, and if you notice highlighted in yellow, we've identified the sand dunes and the wildlife refuges, areas that we're required to avoid. We'll also identify specific land masses, historical sites, and other things that we can't fly over or invade. But these areas, as they are broken up, provide multiple users in this airspace the ability to look at multiple things. On one mission, I could do ag and snowpack because it's located in the same area. You won't find that anywhere else in this state or in our nation, except Alaska. Next slide. To give you a visual representation, we run from the southern Colorado border almost to Salida, and the intent was to capture as much of the mountain terrain as possible where fires are likely. We captured the ski area so we could work with the ski industry, Colorado's one of their major industries out here, and we also tried to avoid things such as the sailplane area to the west and the military training to the northeast. Next slide. So again, why here? The Colorado governor, one of his stated objectives is economic development in rural Colorado. What is the next best thing for you? What is the next thing on the table besides this industry offer? The UAS industry desires a rural location. Why? Because it's safe. I don't have anything to hit on the ground. I can operate my vehicles in a much more safe manner, unlike flying over Denver or Colorado Springs. We also desire non-congested airspace. You have a very low traffic count in this area. And again, keep in mind, that criteria is until we develop the rules and regulations to mix with manned aircraft. Currently, Colorado UAS businesses want to stay here, but because there's nowhere to train, they're being forced to other states who are reaping the benefits. The Colorado Firefighting Center of Excellence is already on the table and already looking for a place, and what is staged out of here but the aerial tankers already at the airport? This is critical new technology that is coming to the forefront in our nation, and Colorado should be in a position to lead. All of the criteria we are looking for exist in Alamosa and the surrounding mountains, all of it. And the university curriculum, you have two universities in your town. What's the next best thing for them? We could bring them high-tech, new curriculum, new development, research, research funding, and all the elements that build. And the most important part of that is the most successful UAS college in the nation has offered to help. That's CU, right here in our state. Next slide. So why am I here and what do I need from you? You are a city council of Alamosa. There are many surrounding counties that fall under that map. You're one part of the team that is required to bring this together. Your city is going to reap the benefits of those who rent hotels, use restaurants, and facilities here in town. That's immediate economic development, okay? We want you to be informed, because we're seeking your consent to support with us as a partner. If you're not informed of what these vehicles do, what they're bringing to the nation, then there's no reason you would back us or support us. We are looking for an active campaign to support economic development. This is what the governor said he wanted, but where does development always seem to happen? Eastern slope of Colorado. I'm offering it here because I want to be here. We want you to act as willing partners and participate in this development. We want you to remain open-minded about an emerging industry, and we're willing to discuss with you all the issues, privacy concerns, safety issues, and anything that your communities and your local surrounding areas want to talk about. We are an open book, and we intend to stay that way. We're not here to hide anything. We are here because currently in Alamosa, there is no skill level for this product. We are industry experts that live in this state in many cases and want to bring that expertise here, develop it in the area, and keep it here. Not send it out of the state, not send it out of our nation to foreign countries, keep it here in Alamosa. We need to do this as soon as possible, and the reason is, many other states across the United States of the 26 competitors that weren't selected, there's 20 of them that are waiting, are trying to get a piece of this now, a $100 billion... A $100 billion industry. That's an estimate. And as fast as these things are growing today, you're going to see them real quick. So we don't want to impact Alamosa in a negative way. We want to help you build something that is probably the biggest economic development offer that's come your way in a long time. I don't say that rudely or arrogantly. I say that because you guys are optimum for this technology, and I'd love to seek your support. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sean. Council, anyone have questions, comments?
Just a quick comment. Thank you, guys, for the presentation. I heard a little bit about this a couple of weeks ago at the Airport Board meeting. The governor's been pushing this for about two years and in cooperation with CDOT and the aviation community. So it looks like it's something that'll work well in our area, and it's, I don't know a whole lot about it, but I got a little information from the Airport Board, and I'm very interested. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you also for your presentation. My question is, what type of data are you collecting and who are you supplying that data to?
The data that is collected across all the systems today is predicated on who the applicant is and who is the operator. If I'm working for the US Forest Service, they get the data. If I'm working for police or local units, they get the data. Now, all that data today, within the test sites, is going to the FAA so they can develop rules and regulations. One of the biggest concerns that people talk about is this privacy issue. Who's going to see something? Bottom line is, nobody's paying me to look. So there is no reason for me to do it. But if you think about it, I can rent a Cessna today at your local airport. I can fly around with my camera, take pictures of anything I want. There's already rules, regulations, and laws governing that. So the rules and laws and governing regulations will be the same for the unmanned systems. Granted, our sensors are very capable, but we have to have a legitimate purpose, and that is, that is part of the debate and part of the rules and regulatory guidance that both Congress and the FAA will have to establish.
Okay, and do you have any safety measures in place right now?
Yes, sir. It depends on the type of unmanned system. There are parachute recoveries. There are intentional flutter-down abilities. It really depends on the size of the system and where it's going to go. There are safety return-to-home, all kinds of things. We have most of the same systems you'll find on manned aircraft, the IFF, the ADS-B, multitudes of other things are capable on unmanned systems. Part of the test site requirements is for the test sites to determine what's most appropriate for what unmanned system, and that's what we're developing and building. That will be part of the testing. But yes, there are safety protocol. And as a matter of fact, I'd like to introduce one gentleman that hasn't had an opportunity to talk, Mr. Dave Couch, because he brings along what we call a chase operation as we test these. David, you mind giving him a little bit on that?
Yeah, thank you. I'll just take a moment here. What my company is going to do is provide manned flight operations that support the UAV. So as the aircraft takes off and flies, I would be, in a sense, layman's term, the airborne babysitter. So while the guys on the ground may be at the Alamosa Airport, and we're way over by Montevista, I'm the eyes that are on it, and I'm in communication with the guys on the ground. That is a requirement by the FAA right now, is when it's out of sight, you have to have visual observers at all times. I would also be in contact with air traffic control. I would have the transponder on the aircraft so that I can let them know where it's at as well. So that's what I'm bringing as well. And then also, we're looking at bringing flight training because there's starting to be more requirements internationally for people to be licensed pilots to fly these. So now there's a requirement for people that may have thousands of hours of UAV experience, but they don't have a pilot's license. So now we need to do that training. Currently, there's a company that's looking to invest into mine to bring flight training, and this is where I would like to bring it as well. So I'm looking at about five aircraft, maybe 10 employees, and over a two-year period, probably purchasing almost 150,000 gallons of fuel, having facilities here, hangars or a building and such like that to help with the economy here as well.
Okay, and my final question is, what type of timeline are we looking at for you to fully implement your strategy?
Well, if you think about it, I've spent two years here. Two years trying to build this for the state of Colorado. I was not compensated a single penny for that process. We devoted, I'd guesstimate at least a half million dollars in man-hours between the team members to do this over two years. We would like it to happen as soon as possible. If, in a perfect world, the FAA would give me approval in 30 days, but the reality is, it's anywhere between 90 and 180 days before they give approval. We can't fly a single thing until the FAA approves it. There's a process where we apply. Currently, that has to be done aircraft by aircraft, company by company. For an individual civilian company to do that, they have to do an experimental authorization. The opposite way to do it is called a certificate of authorization, and a public entity applies for that. That's part of what we would need from the surrounding counties, whether it's a police agency for firefighting, the rural sheriffs, or whether it's the university as a public entity for research. All of these would become immediate partners with the group. But again, you have industry in Colorado bringing the expertise to help them and explain that process. So we're, at the outset, I figure a year from now before the first wheel turns. In a perfect world, six months from now, we'd like to be flying. And that's not me, that's 38 companies in Colorado. Yes, sir.
John, maybe a question to piggyback on Ty's question there. What exactly are you looking for from the city of Alamosa if we were to become a partner in this? What exactly are we talking about?
What we're talking about, again, because there is no commercial operation of unmanned systems in the nation today, companies that want to train, test, have to find things they can support. If I partner with the Rural Sheriffs Association, I'm supporting their mission. And in process, I'm training my folks and getting more and more people capable of using the aircraft, regardless of the type of UAS. And in the case of the universities, they would be able to do the research, and in the case of the city, if the city has a need, be it agricultural support or otherwise, they would become the applicant for the certificate of authorization with the Federal Aviation Administration. I mean, I was asked the question earlier, why the city council? Well, you guys represent the biggest part of where people are coming to. Where we will fly will be well out of your purview. However, they're always going to be coming back home somewhere. This is where we're going to spend the night. So I don't know right now that I've found a method for the city council to have a need. You have a very localized police force. You have a very localized city, but the surrounding area, the county commissioners, et cetera, would all be part of this. What we're looking for is for you to understand what this brings economically to the city, to what the governor's already recognized as needing it, and we need the vocal voice. We need you to understand that you're part of the big picture. You're one of the cities, one of the counties, one of the airports that fulfills that entire map you saw. So directly, I don't know that I need anything other than for you to understand we're trying to bring you something big, and we'd like your support, but we want it to be informed support, not just, great, go ahead and do it. We want you to ask the questions of why we're here and what we're doing, and we want to open those books to you to see it.
Would there be any type of manufacturing?
Yes, sir. That's a very large portion of this. Yes, sir. For instance, the one company from Europe is, look, they can't fly in Europe, so they don't want to manufacture there. They want to bring the entire process here, build it, test it, and sell it. So there will be manufacturing. And if you remember, we showed you quite a few Colorado companies that are here. They don't want to fly here and manufacture in Denver. They don't want to fly here and manufacture in Sea Springs. They want to manufacture where they're going to fly and test. So those operations could come down here. Again, that would build industry, provide jobs, et cetera.
I'm very intrigued and encouraged by your presentation. I think one of the things that I wanted to ask you was, what are the implications with CDOT when it comes to this entire project?
CDOT is currently the state agency that represents, through their Division of Aeronautics, aviation interests in the state. We see CDOT as an absolute partner in this. We would like to see CDOT bring on industry expertise because there's very little industry expertise either in the FAA and the individual state departments. Typically, we're an emerging industry. We would like them as a partner. We would like them fully involved with this, and we would like their blessing because it carries a lot of weight. But we would very much like to see the Department of Transportation Division of Aeronautics also include expertise of knowledge. For instance, I've spent, you know, five years outside of the country flying and deconflicting unmanned systems. You don't have anyone in the state currently that's done that. I've taught at the Air Force Academy how to fly these and operate these. You don't have that expertise in the Department of Transportation. Multitudes of individuals on our team bring years and years and years of experience. 15,000 flight hours in manned aviation for myself, commercial aviation, military aviation, and UAVs. We need that expertise in our departments and in our state offices that can become active proponents for this project.
Thank you.
Just a quick note, I had a conversation with CDOT Aeronautics Division a couple of days ago, specifically discussing the Alamosa Valley, and the answer I got was that they would be very happy to support and also be available for questions, especially on your end, and answer anything with respect to the subject matter. As long as you approach them directly, they'll be happy to assist and be happy to hear and to be here and support it locally.
Thank you.
John, one other thing. I know you mentioned you've been here two years observing the valley. Have you identified a location to where you will house your operation once you're able to move forward?
Yes, sir. During the two years, my background, again, is an airspace manager. I'm required in military to go out and evaluate airfields. I evaluate them for their supporting structures, the runways, the hangars, and the ability to get the services we need in the local area. So part of my visits down here, which have probably been 10 by now, have been actually looking at the runway, looking at hangars, looking at available land, the surrounding runways for available emergency landings, et cetera, et cetera. I had to count the number of available rooms in the hotels so I could develop all this for the state. It was a very thorough, very involved process. So primarily, I'd like to do this at Alamosa Airport. The concern there is Alamosa Airport is a general aviation airport with commercial aviation. There are provisions within the FAA for that to occur, manned and unmanned flight, with all the safety features in place. It's currently happening in the US today at other airports. It is on a very limited basis, and most of those were grandfathered as the rules came on, they had already been doing it, they were allowed to continue doing it. For me, as an ex-military man, I did that every day, deconflicted manned and unmanned. So I would love to do it at Alamosa because everything is there. There's acreage on one side of the airport that would be perfect for us to add an additional hangar. But if you think about what you saw in the photos, we kind of bring our own stuff initially. As it becomes a classroom, as it becomes a training center, as you build dormitories and those things, we would look all over, you know, for that ability and that opportunity as it exists. And that would be not we, Rocky Mountain UAS, but industry coming in based on their investment and what they want to do. Maybe state, maybe the county wants to invest in those kind of things to provide, to gather the revenue themselves. But we have evaluated it. We have looked at airfields, private airfields that we could lease or purchase, or even land that we could possibly just put runways on. So all of that has been considered extensively by the team. Yes, sir.
I just want to comment on Ty's comment. These gentlemen brought this deal to our airport manager, Carol, which then brought it to the board, the airport board, and the airport board fully supports this, what the capabilities is. So when you ask the question, where would they locate, well, we'd hope they locate here in Alamosa, so.
Thank you, Charlie. Gentlemen, any further questions?
I had a question. And I don't know who the various airspace stakeholders would be, but I assume, for instance, Great Lakes Airlines and the San Luis Valley Pilots Association at a minimum. Have you had a conversation with any of the local stakeholders who might be affected with airspace conflicts, if there are any, or that kind of thing?
We have talked at length with many of the regional stakeholders, meaning the Colorado Ag Pilot Spray Association, AOPA, National Business Jets Association, those kind of entities. As we consider more and more refining where we can actually go in our application where to go to the FAA, we would definitely include the locals to tell us what their impact is. I don't want to impact a local flight school. I don't want to stop Great Lakes from coming in here or any other airline, and I certainly don't want to stop Joe Blow and his 1941 steerman from taking off out of his backyard and enjoying the Alamosa Valley in an open cockpit biplane. So we want to talk to all those people. That's, again, one of the purposes to be in front of a city council. You represent your local population. That's what we want to get the word out to. We want those questions. We want those people to address concerns and anything that might affect what we plan.
Erica, would the next step for council be discussion or recommendation, or what do you think?
Well, it kind of depends upon what exactly is being sought here. I don't know that there's anything concrete that the group is looking for from council. Council has certainly, I think, expressed in some of the comments, their strong support for the program. If that needs to be formalized somehow to assist this process going forward, I guess tell us what that formalization that you might be looking for would take the form of. If it's waiting until we identify some sort of need, for instance, helping us manage the city ranch and how the irrigation's happening there, or where we should, you know, do that kind of detailed stuff, we can look further at that if that's the kind of formality that we're waiting for. So I guess I'm a little at sea, and council's probably a little at sea in terms of what you're looking for by way of a formal action.
I guess at this point, from the council, we're looking, we're looking for an endorsement to continue exploring and moving forward. If I have a discussion at the State House with regional reps, congressmen, senators, et cetera, and I can't say that the city of Alamosa is at least endorsing us pressing forward and having the discussion, I'm dead in the water. So I really want to know that this is something that interests you. You understand that it's bringing economic development to rural Colorado. We're trying to meet the governor's goal, and we'd like to have the support, be it written or formally endorsed, that you're okay with us pressing forward with you as one of the partners in this process.
Mr. Mayor, I think a motion to that effective council's interested in that, reflected in the minutes, would be appropriate at this point.
Thank you, Eric. Counsel?
My question to that is, I'm also in support of this too, but would we want to get the input of our constituents and the public?
I assume you would. And so you're, that's, again, you're not doing a formal approval of a, whatever it was called, a COA or anything like that. It would be a motion that you support the concept and are interested in moving it further and discussing it with the constituents.
And I guess if there's no further questions, I'll go ahead and make that motion that we support this group, and once we get this more formalized, maybe then we can have those discussions with the rest of the community. But at this point, at least so they can go forward, and if they discuss this with our state leaders or even with the governor, that we do support this kind of economic development.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Counsel, start voting, please. Kristi?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, sir.
We will have a letter.
Appreciate you, Tom.
Absolutely. Thank you. Next up, under regular business, we have Public Works, the discussion for the purchase of two new membrane trains for the water treatment plant. Don?
As you may recall, last March, we brought to you a proposal based on the information we had at that time to increase the efficiency of the water treatment plant. Again, that efficiency dropped off quite abruptly in April 2013. We still don't know for sure why. The only single event that we know that was associated with it same time was an adjustment on the software of the plant, but that type of adjustment should not have had this effect as far as we know. But again, it wasn't a gradual decrease in efficiency. It was a very abrupt drop in efficiency in basically a one-month period. We've been trying to track down what's happening and prevent it from happening again, and hopefully to gain some of the efficiency back from the fibers. And we had looked at doing that with pH adjustment. When we tried, when we costed that out, working with a couple of different vendors, they provided some numbers that turned out to be grossly inaccurate by a factor of about three. So while we still think pH adjustment might do the job, it's no longer cost-effective. It's actually more cost-effective to just replace the fibers every five to five and a half years. So based on what we know right now, and again, we're going to continue to look to make sure this doesn't happen again if it indeed can be prevented. this doesn't happen again, if it indeed can be prevented. Maybe the life that fibers are going to turn out to be just five years. We still have a prorate warranty on our existing fibers that we can take advantage of. So what we're proposing to do is replace two of our five trains of fibers. The train being one cell with a set of fibers in it. And again, we've got five, we've actually got provisions for a sixth. But what we're looking at is replacing two of the existing trains to bring back some of the efficiency of the plant, and then each year thereafter, replacing one more train. And the costs are, as you see, if we replace two trains this year at current costs with the current prorata, if we go with a higher capacity membranes, the cost in that's going to be $218,000, which is pretty close to what we were actually looking at during the pilot test for the pH adjustment. We do have those funds in reserve. They will have to be, of course, appropriated for this, but we do have these funds in reserve. We are going to continue to look at other options in terms of longer term. How can we keep the fibers operating at higher efficiency for a longer period of time? And that could be something as simple as pH adjustment, just not as drastically. I mean, we're looking at taking a pH of eight and dropping it down to about a 5.5. Unfortunately, that takes a lot of acid to do that. And then we have to bring it up to something above seven, so now we need a lot of caustic. So it's not only the equipment to do the pH adjustment, but the quantity of chemicals would be very expensive, plus we'd probably have to build an addition just to have someplace to put them. So we want to avoid that, or at least minimize that. Again, we may find a better way of pH adjustment, and it may not be as drastic. Those are things we're going to have to test, though. The problem we have right now is that we are going through some very long cleaning cycles, and each cleaning cycle, of course, takes that train out of operation, and they are becoming less and less effective. So what we'd like to do is go ahead and move forward with buying two trains of fibers this year, and we will budget for one train for each, basically, we'll go in a five-year cycle after that. So that's essentially what we're asking your permission to do.
Thank you, Don. Questions or comments, counsel?
I had a question. Don, you said that this money was in reserves, so you're saying that this wasn't budgeted for this?
This was not budgeted for this year, that is correct.
Yeah, so.
So we will have to reappropriate funds from the reserves, and what those reserves are from the sales tax, we are collecting more in sales tax than what we're required to pay each year on the loan when we built the water treatment plant. So we've got sufficient monies in there to cover this. And then going forward, we're basically building it to the operating budget.
So the reserves you take this money from would be not enterprise, would you take them out of enterprise?
Oh, yes, absolutely. These are enterprise funded reserves, they're not general fund reserves.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. Rusty?
I have a couple of questions, Don. The first one, the filtration system, the way it's set up, is it in stages? Do we run the water through one filter, then the next, then the next?
No. It's basically run parallel, if you will. So each train produces its own water, it's not going from one cell to the next.
So that eliminates all of that. Also, give me your take on the higher-capacity filters. They're about, they're saying there's about a 20% more capacity, but there's really about a 20% savings or increase in cost. If the longevity is the same, I don't see really, unless it filters better, that that's a saving.
Well, it does two things for us, Rusty. First of all, it increases the capacity of the plant itself, just because we've got an extra 20% and each train has replaced those filters. But the other thing it does, because unless our use increases by 20%, the fibers are used that much less. So you're putting less load on each individual fiber, or distributing it over more fibers, however you care to look at that. So the degradation should be slower just because of that. I don't anticipate huge increases in the amount of water produced. But spreading that over the extra 20% fibers places less load on each individual fiber, and hopefully will extend the life that way.
And that makes sense, and I know you can't answer the question until it's been tested.
Correct.
But, and with this, if we go to this system, is there going to be operational savings as far as chemicals and stuff that we planned on?
There probably won't be any significant operational savings from what we are doing right now. Our ferroc is less than half of what the engineers told us it would be, ferroc being our coagulant. We're using less than half of that, what the engineers told us we would expect to use when the plant was first designed. And I credit our plant operators, Farin and Roy, Farin Hall and Roy Sanchez, for that. They've done a very good job of monitoring that very closely, seeing what we can do and what we can't do, and how much room we have to go. We can't go right up to the limit, we have to stay something below that. And through close monitoring and trying different combinations, they've really been able to minimize the use of the ferroc in particular.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Rusty. Greg?
Don, when the water treatment plant was built, wasn't it built for a sixth train?
Again, we've got a sixth train, and that was intended if we ever needed to add capacity in the future as the water production needs go up. So we've got that extra cell, if you were willing, you can put in another train of fibers, that would require the purchase of some pumps and some other plumbing things that would have to be changed. That really doesn't need to be done right now if we get the larger fiber packages, if you will.
Okay, I was just wondering if it would be better to just replace one of those and set up the sixth train, or?
Yeah, we considered that, and at some point, we may want to explore that further. But at this point, because the larger-capacity fiber trains that are available now than what were available when built the plant, it's probably more cost-effective to go with a larger train as opposed to putting that sixth cell back in operation.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Rusty?
I lost my question, if I think of it.
Okay. What do you think? Let me ask this one. So what are we looking at, $218,000?
That would be the maximum out. Now, we're still verifying that the pumps we've got will handle the extra fibers. If it turns out they won't, we'll drop back to the less expensive option. But based on the design data that we have right now, I'm very confident that it will be able to handle the extra fibers, but we're waiting for GE, who is the supplier, to verify those calculations. The reason I'm confident is that when we built the cells, I really hate to get into this because it gets a little bit confusing.
Sure, that's okay.
You've got cassettes, and you've got modules, and you've got trains, and I almost forget which is which. I know which is the train. Cassettes and modules, I get confused. But the fact of the matter is, each rack has several different, what I'm going to call it, cassettes. Farin might hit me for using the wrong word, but that's what I'm going to call it, cassettes of fibers. The racks themselves, however, can carry, hold almost twice as many racks as what we currently put in there, twice as many cassettes as what we currently put in there. And I distinctly remember during the design, the discussion of at what point are we going to start expanding on that? And we allowed for that in the design of the pump, so I'm very confident we can handle the higher-capacity fibers, although we are waiting for confirmation back from GE on that.
So if a person, and I'll probably make it after Rusty asks this question, we would ask for $218,000, up to $218,000 to come out of enterprise funds?
That is correct.
Okay. Go ahead, Rusty, I'm sorry.
I got my question back, sorry about that, Don. You mentioned that the ones we're replacing now are under warranty. Are we going to be able to take advantage of warranty on the restaurant?
This includes the warranty, the prorated warranty. It was a full replacement after five years, and it's prorated each year after that, up to a total of 15 years.
Okay, so we'll be able to take advantage?
We will be taking advantage of the prorated portion of the warranty, yes.
Are they going to change the warranty on the ones that we purchase?
That's something else we're still investigating. I doubt very much they're going to give us a 15-year warranty.
I would think so, too. Thank you.
Well, Mayor, if there's no further questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve up to $218,000 out of our enterprise funds for this project.
I second. Have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Kristi?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next, we'll move up to our city clerk, municipal court, discuss the June 18th and July 2nd meeting schedule and direct staff accordingly. June 18th, we will be in Breckenridge with our CML conference, gentlemen. So that is probably a meeting that will be canceled, and the July 2nd is very close to the 4th of July. I'd like some discussion and direction here for staff.
There are a couple of options. You can combine the July 2nd meeting and the meeting that you're going to be at CML to the following Wednesday, which is the 25th, if you want to cancel that. But if the July 2nd meeting is not a problem, you can just move the July 18th meeting to the July 2nd and combine those two.
Eric, I wanted to visit with you briefly about our charter and the fact that we have to have two meetings a month. Can we combine those legally? Are there any issues here that we might face with that?
You know, actually, I looked at that, it's, the charter doesn't require two meetings per month, but it's the ordinances that do. And specifically, the ordinance says, but you can reschedule the time, date, location of any meeting by resolution. It bugs me a little bit to clog up our resolutions with something as formal as a resolution merely to reschedule a meeting, but that's what your ordinance says. So probably the way to do that would be to direct staff to come back with a resolution for you to consider to do whatever it is that you choose to do. So tonight, figure out what it is you want to do, and we'll come back with a resolution you can discuss at the next meeting.
So that I'm straight on this, Kristi, your recommend, or one of the recommendations or suggestions is to move the June 18th meeting and the 2nd to the week between the two, the 25th, correct? Okay. Thank you.
I will just state for counsel that I will be gone out of town on the June 25th date.
I think I'll be out of town that day, too.
Just so you are, just so we're clear, I don't know if I was clear before, you can just cancel these meetings, but that's rescheduling it to zero.
We can cancel it?
You can, yes.
You can.
So currently, do we have anything on the agenda for either of those dates at all right now, to where if we cancel it, it would affect anything?
Apparently not yet.
No?
What would be wrong with July 2nd? I mean, two days to 4th of July, I don't understand why that would be an issue.
I would be here for July 2nd and June 25th.
I will as well.
So would I.
And I think I would be, had better luck getting me here on the Saturday.
Okay.
I will be available on the 2nd also.
That possibly makes a quorum, then. So we'll just have the meeting on the 2nd, and the one on?
Cancel the 18th.
On the one on the 18th, we'll just cancel. Counsel? Kristi?
We'll have time to relook at the 4th, or the 2nd, if something comes up between now and then, we'll have another meeting to make adjustments if we have to on that.
Good, so we'll come back for the next meeting with a resolution canceling that June 18th meeting for you to take a look at.
Thank you, Eric. All right. All right. Thank you, staff. Next up is committee reports. Committee reports. Who's got committee reports? Mr., yes, Mike. Greg?
You guys got two. Oh, there we go.
Roger.
Yes, Gulf Board had a meeting on April 17th. The restaurant opened on April 18th with a limited menu for now. Jared Roberts is the new manager. He currently has a limited menu, but is going to expand that menu as soon as the freezer is repaired. I think that will be this week. Jared will then begin adding a few specials in the evening, and the compressor for the draft beer dispensary was also repaired. John Attencio has Ross Benson and Erica Cantu working in the pro shop now. Ross will begin giving lessons starting this May. The Chama and Dulce youth have lessons scheduled right now, and the Center School District will begin soon. A flyer was sent out to all elementary schools for the junior golf program for each student. The junior golf program begins the first week of June. The first big tournament of the year is the Alamosa Education Foundation Golf Ball Tournament on May 9th. The club is donating all the proceeds to the Alamosa Education Foundation. Partnership meeting was held last evening. One of the items discussed at the partnership meeting was the need to keep close tabs on the usage of water on the front nine. As of now, we are three acre feet less used this year than last year at the same time. The usage all depends on how much precipitation we receive this year, as whether we can keep the fairways green all year long. We must conserve water. The ground superintendent now has a crew of eight working on the golf course. And that's all I had.
Thank you, Greg.
But my question is, who's going to pay for the freezer and all that? Heinz? We are?
Well.
And what is it going to cost?
Per our agreement with the golf course, anything over $1,000 on maintenance of real equipment, real property, the city is responsible for that.
So do we know what we're paying?
Yeah, we don't have firm cost in that compressor yet, apparently.
Is, you know, we've already stuck $140,000 out there. How much are we going to keep on doing, you know?
Well, again, it is our golf course, and per our agreement, anything that breaks that costs over $1,000, basically, we need to fix it.
And that freezer's ours.
That freezer is definitely ours, it was put in when the building was put in as part of that construction project.
Jesus.
Do we have any update on that freezer? Yeah, I know what was last night.
Thank you for that question, Charlie. Anyone else? Jan?
Yeah, Adam State, ASNF is no longer having meetings because they're graduating and summer vacation, so they'll pick up again in September. And I went to the Alamosa Board of Education meeting on Monday, and Patty Kruger was named the assistant middle school principal at Ortega, and Andy LeVere was named the new high school principal. And they're also talking about getting equipment to clean up the turf and maintenance of the track at the new stadium, so.
Thank you. Rusty?
I have two. One of them, airport board, I attended, and we got a highlight of that, of most of that meeting. But one thing that's probably of interest to you people is that the airport has been, is doing a wildlife study. They've just begun a one-year study. Obviously, they're having deer issue at the airport, and FFA does not like deer being on the runway, so, and owls, big birds. So we are not the only ones experiencing that difficulty. They're doing their study. They're doing their study. It just began. It'll be a one-year wildlife study, and that probably, besides what we saw tonight, was the highlight of that. Also, a tree board meeting. Let you guys know that we are a Tree City USA for the 24th year, which is commendable. Heinz and his staff do a terrific job keeping us up to date on that stuff. Also like to thank Heinz and his staff for digging the holes. We had a whole bunch of trees planted. I was planning on being there, but something personal came up. I didn't make it, but there was a big planting at the cemetery and also at?
H Street.
Baseball fields on H Street, yeah. Sunset Park, crab apple trees, those will be labeled so everyone will know what each different type of crab apple tree looks like when it grows. And that is it. Thank you.
I went to help on that day, but there was about 50 people that were, so it was a lot of people. They did it.
Thank you. Ty?
I also attended a meeting in the past week with DRG and Development Resource Group with Mike Wisdom, and we talked about some of the economic, business economic development activities that are going on in Alamosa and throughout the San Luis Valley. One recommendation I made to him that it might be a good idea for the council members to see what they've done as far as helping some of the businesses in the area, as far as economic development and the funding that they've put into those businesses, to see the results. And I think it'd be good for all of us to maybe go and entertain that idea so we can see exactly what DRG is doing in the community.
Thank you, Ty. Anyone else? I attended the Colorado Association of Community Corrections Board in Montrose, and it was very informative. I'm new to that board, and, but before I went, I attended a screening committee meeting here. They have a screening committee that meets every Thursday here to screen applicants into the community corrections facility here. Also toured the community corrections facility in Montrose. At this point in time, I believe they have one female and something like 22 male. And we are, here in the valley, are in the process of looking at an RFP from Intervention Community Correction Services. Greg Kildow was there and there in charge of the Montrose facility. Very nice facility, as a matter of fact, and so they are, if they get the contract here, they will hopefully be purchasing the building and taking over the program here. So that was very educational for me. I really, I really enjoyed that. One of the things I did learn, and I think I mentioned this to Counselor Vehill, was that Trinidad State Junior College has been cut funding for the GED program. It's probably something that we're going to need to look into as a community and try to regain the funding for that. I guess they have a new provider, and so they are going to all expensive computers to do that, and I think some of the outlets for the GED program here in southern Colorado have been cut out of that funding. So I think it's important for us to realize that education and community corrections go hand in hand, you know, so we're going to need to do something or at least look at that and possibly discuss it, maybe even encourage bringing that back somehow. Other than that, that's, that's all I've got as well. Anyone else? Staff announcements. We'll start with, anyone have a staff announcement?
How do you know we're not guys? Just, well, probably yes. Just have the modesty.
You keep saying that, Don. We'll see you next week.
Jim, you got anything to say?
No.
Chief?
Nothing.
Parks and Rec, we having a meeting this month?
Yes.
All right.
It's Wednesday.
Christie?
Nothing.
Okay. Thank you. And then we'll move on to our local liquor licensing authority action. We have a consent calendar B for a special events permit application. The Alamosa Little Grizzlies Five-Star Riding Car Show, May the 17th of 2014. Any comments, Christie, on that or entertain a motion?
I mean, we approve that?
Would you like to clarify that? Michael?
I said, I would like to approve this special event permit.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. Start voting, please. We're missing one. Christie?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. We'll move on to counsel comment.
I'd like to make a comment to Don. Don, I want to thank you. I know this is your last meeting here in Alamosa, but I want to thank you again for all the great work that you've done for the city of Alamosa, and I want to thank you also personally for the work and advice that you've given me over the years from the organization that I work with. So I wish you much success in everything that you do, and congratulations on that new grandbaby.
I had, we're going to follow his lead or, because I, well, because I had a different topic.
I'll just go along with that, Don. I hope life's short, and I hope you enjoy retirement, so please do. Thank you for your service.
I would also like to thank Don. In the little time I've known, you've been very helpful to me in different things, and I appreciate it. And I'd also like to thank Heinz and his staff and the Boy Scouts and the tree board for the awesome tree planting this past week. It's going to make our city look a lot nice, a lot nicer.
Rusty? To me, Don, it's only fitting that you take Heather's place tonight, right? Throw you under the, in the fire, last meeting, that's fitting, appropriate. You deserve a great retirement. You've worked hard for this city. I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you, and enjoy retirement.
Thank you, Rusty. Michael?
I also want to wish you the best in all your endeavors, and if you need a fishing partner, you got my number.
Thank you, Michael. Don? We're going to miss you. There's going to be a lot of stuff going on around here that we're probably going to need your expertise on, but hopefully Pat will be able to give you a call. Does he have you on speed dial?
I'm sure he does.
Absolutely.
That's very Catholic guy.
Enjoy, enjoy your retirement. Enjoy your, your time off, Don. You've been a great, great asset to this community. You will be sorely missed, and I'll tell you what, just have a great life. Thank you very much. Anything else, counsel?
Well, no, I had a couple.
No, go ahead, Charlie. I'm sorry.
Always last. Don, I also thank you for last, over 20 years we've worked together, and it's, you know, we've, we've done a lot of things together, and what you've done out there in the Washington addition area to get that up to par, I really appreciate that. So thank you very much also. Good luck. Thank you.
Rusty? I have a couple more things. I wanted to get the Don thing all together and?
And I'll go after you also.
Okay. I am planning a dinner barbecue at my house. I've notified all counsel. This Friday night at 6:30, we will be discussing no city business at the barbecue. We'll just be enjoying ourselves and relaxing. Also like to thank Dwayne. Congratulations on your appointment. You're swearing in, and you've hit the ground running, and you're doing a terrific job. Thank you.
I had one last thing here, and this work session we just had, it kind of brought, it was brought up also, these, the Godamalan community that's been planning that, their, their vegetables there, and now because of, everything's in limbo, they're concerned about the planting season. And I don't know if you guys have received all these emails that Russell has been communicating back and forth, but he suggested that maybe we would do something over at the dairy plant. And I don't know if Heather's already communicated that to you, Don, to see if something like that?
Yeah, we've talked about that. It's certainly physically possible, and Alan, both according to Dan's emails and our conversations with him, seems to be amendable to that, which is, was the biggest concern.
Sure.
So I don't see any reason why it can't be done. We'll just have to figure out where, how much, and when, I guess.
Well, according to these people, they, they want it, you know, May 15th is right around the corner, and that's when you're supposed to at least start preparing the ground and get ready to plant. I know from talking to some of the other farmers, we're looking still at some cold weather clear up to June 2nd, you know?
Yeah, as you say, preparing the ground, certainly, you can start that anytime now.
Yeah.
Probably won't want to plant until, as you say, you know, right around that Memorial Day weekend.
Sure. So what is the process then, Don, would be, you know, and this is maybe something temporarily until we can finally finalize something or something, just, just to get this season, you know, going, and then work something out if we, if we decide to continue with this, or if maybe this, whoever takes the, the post in place, how they work that out. The main thing is to try to get some kind of thing going for them this year.
I think what we need to have is a face-to-face meeting onsite, trying to determine where exactly and how much ground they need.
Okay.
And, and make sure that Alan's okay with it. As far as irrigation, they use a drip irrigation system in the past. I'm assuming that's what they'd want to do again. If they're expecting us to provide that, that, that's something we'll have to work between ourselves and Alan and possibly Parks.
Sure.
But really, what we probably need is a face-to-face meeting right on the site where all the parties involved.
I will, I'll put that together.
Thank you.
I, I also had some thoughts on that as well. I know that we've got a leasing that is responsible for portions of the ranch. We also have Heinz over in the background that I'm sure is kind of concerned about where it's going to happen, what's going to happen, who's going to lease it, what plots are going to be available. I think it's something we're going to need to discuss before we, before we really do anything. I think it's probably something that counsel's going to have to put on the agenda somewhere or maybe a work session, but at this point in time, historically, we have not used any portion of that for planning or for gardening in any way, shape, or form. So I think a discussion has to happen, and maybe legal could help us with, with the leasing or are we leasing any part of that part of the ranch, or what's the story there?
It is under lease.
Right.
The leasing has already said he's amendable to having those plots go in at that location. Again, there'll probably be some fencing requirements, there'll probably be some irrigation requirements. We'll have to figure out what those are and bring, bring it back to you at the next meeting because we can't go any later than that.
Okay.
To determine whether or not you're willing to support that or not.
Okay. So policy obviously has to be defined in that area, then?
Well, we have to think about the structure of how we're going to do this, you know? There's no entity that you could have a lease with for the garden plot that I'm aware of, like, like we have with Alan for the entire ranch. So it would be city property that the city would be opening up for the use of citizens, other people to do their own gardening.
And I understand that. I'm sure there are a large number of citizens out there who are going to, well, anyway, it's something we need to discuss, who would be first in line, second in line, lottery? I don't know. Just interesting.
And like I said, this is a temporary thing that the leasing out there already agrees to. It's not like we're going to develop a new leasing or nothing. This is something that will, 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 will serve for just this season. After that, you know, we don't know what, what happens with the, with these other people, and if that happens, maybe they'll continue there. But this is something to help them out this year, and if he's, if he's willing to do it, you know, he, in fact, he even wants, he'll bring his tractors down and do the plowing himself and everything.
Yeah, and the ranch will still be leased to Mr. Simpson.
Yeah.
That does not change.
Exactly. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, counsel.
I just wanted to say one thing to our new chief. I just wanted to congratulate you on officially being the police chief here, and I, I wish you the best, and let your, your team know that we fully support them, and I see them out there in the community a lot doing their jobs, and they have some of the toughest jobs to have to deal with, and I just think they should know that we appreciate the service that they are providing, and congratulation to you, and I know that you're going to bring great leadership.
I also want to congratulate you. I have a son who's in, Sheriff in Riverside, California, and he tells me about some of the stuff that goes on, man, and you have a tough job in this community. The crime is really going rampant, and you guys are really staying on top of it, I think. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Chief as well, good luck. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, counsel.